Welcome to the Laconia City Council Meeting of May 24th, 2021, the hour being 7:03 PM. Like to call us to order, but before we go any further, I'd like to read once again the introduction for electronic meetings. As Mayor of Laconia City Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to watch the live YouTube video at www.youtube.com/LaconianH. Listen to this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-558-8656, or participate by the Zoom app. Webinar ID: 838-2133-4710, password: 456544. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the City of Laconia's website at www.laconianh.gov. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 527-1265, extension 243, or email at cityclerk@laconianh.gov. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states his presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I'd ask the Clerk, Cheryl Hebert, to please call the roll.
Counsel Cheney.
President and Council Chambers.
Counselor Sucey.
Woman alone.
Counselor Whitman.
I'm home, in the room that I'm in alone. There's a family member in the house.
Haines.
In the council chambers.
Counselor Hamel.
Woman alone.
Counselor Felt.
Woman alone.
Mayor Hosmer.
I am here in council chambers this evening. Thank you very much. Before we go any farther, I would ask that Counselor Felt lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Felt. Joined this evening by City Manager Scott Myers, City Finance Director Glenn Smith, and by the aforementioned Recording Secretary City Clerk Cheryl Hebert. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, which is the acceptance of minutes from previous meetings. At a budget meeting of May 10th, 2021, minutes of the meeting were distributed to the City Council on Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. With no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk, the minutes will be accepted as distributed. Under 7B, which is our regular meeting minutes of May 10th, 2021, minutes of the meeting were distributed to the City Council on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. With no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk, the minutes will be accepted as distributed. We have our budget meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021. Those minutes of the meeting, the minutes of the meeting were distributed to the City Council on Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. With no corrections or changes submitted to the City Clerk, the minutes will be accepted as distributed. Lot of minutes work, last couple of weeks there. Madam Clerk, well done, and thank you very much. Under number eight, consent and action items. This is a request by the Weers Community Park Association to hold a parking fundraiser event at the Weers Community Center and Weers Community Park front and rear parking lots in conjunction with the 2021 Laconia Motorcycle Week event. The Weers Community Park Association has requested the use of the community center and Weers Community Park front rear lots on Saturday through Sunday, June 12th, 2021 through June 20th, 2021, from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM for the Laconia Motorcycle Week 2021 fundraising event. Weers Community Park Association is the benefactor of the event. City Council approval is being requested because this event is anticipating revenues above $2,000. Staff recommendation is that this request be approved. This is an appropriate use of the city park property. The Parks and Recreation Commission has approved this request, conditioned upon further approval from the City Council. And this is an annual event, as we all know, at the Weers Community Center and the Weers Community Park. We all know that the money that they collect during fundraising is certainly put to good use in the Weers Beach area. Right now, I'd be looking for a motion to move to approve the request by the Weers Community Park Association to hold a parking fundraiser event at the Weers Community Center and Weers Community Park front and rear parking lots in conjunction with the 2021 Laconia Motorcycle Week event being held on June 12th, 2021 through June 20th, 2021, from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM, so made by Counselor Felt, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Cheney.
Yes.
Counselor Sucey.
Yes.
Counselor Whitman.
Yes.
Counselor Haines.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Felt.
Yes.
That's six votes, and the affirmative that motion passes. Moving on to item number nine right now, which is citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. If citizens attending tonight's meeting, virtually, are listening in and would like to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda, now would be the appropriate time, if you were to raise your hand, I'm sure Mr. Smith will call on you, and I'll wait on your cue, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, nobody has raised a hand.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Moving right along now to item number 13, which is public hearings. Public hearing on ordinances 2021-235-1317 and 19, relative to amending City Code Chapter 235 zoning, making amendments related to various aspects of wetland and wetland buffer regulations. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the May 12th, 2021 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, and posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU. Action on this item will be taken up under unfinished business this evening. So I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:11 PM. And if anyone in the public would like to speak, now would be the appropriate time, raise your hand, and I'll wait on your cue, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, nobody has raised a hand.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I will close the public hearing at 7:12 PM. Moving along to number 15, under the mayor's report, we'll make this rather brief this evening. Just to mention that this evening was a soft opening of sorts, and an appreciation to the people and organizations that made contributions to the Colonial Theater. Counselor Hamel and I had an opportunity to attend, and I want to tell you that it's, the momentum is building to a grand opening later on this summer. The facility looks absolutely spectacular. The event was very well attended, and I know Counselor Hamel recorded the first music being played in the new theater. And so it was a really a great event. There's a lot of excitement about going on about the theater around the city, and certainly it's great to not only talk to businesses on Main Street that are excited about what's going on there, a little bit of action in rentals down on Main Street, as well as property being purchased. So I just want to say, certainly a lot of what was anticipated, which is excitement around the theater, some economic activity, both on the residential and the commercial end of things, is really starting to come to fruition. So good things still happening here in the city. And thanks to Mayor Angler, who was certainly in our thoughts today as we began the slow, steady opening of the theater. So moving along to item number 16, which is council comments. And I will look to councilors here to raise your hand, or give me a wave, and let me know. You can make your comments. Counselor Cheney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask the City Manager if this would be the appropriate time to ask questions about Round Bay Road.
I'm happy to take it at this time, Counselor Cheney.
If I may, Mayor. I was wondering, Mr. Myers, if, I know there were concerns expressed by those who lived in the area. I think most of those issues have been addressed in a letter sent to the residents recently. You and I had a conversation earlier about whether it would be possible to, my words, sleeve the existing pipes, which I believe are something on the order of cement pipes, and something on the order of 70 or 75 years old and starting to deteriorate. Would it be possible, rather than digging up and replacing them, to sleeve them with a slightly smaller pipe, maybe out of PVC or something like that?
Yeah, so we've been discussing that internally. And I know Wes Anderson, our Public Works Director, is on, so I'm not sure. Glenn, if you could promote Wes, so we can chime in on this as well. So just a little background, this is a neighborhood concern. We had shared some proposed plans with the neighbors on Round Bay about updating the drainage system in there, and really needing the assistance with one or two properties to try and do this job first rate. And obviously, with property owners, this concern about coming in on their property and disturbing mature trees and mature landscaping and that type of stuff. So we're trying to balance that with the need to handle the drainage in that area appropriately. A proposal that we put forward and shared with the neighbors got some feedback about catching more catch basins and discharging potentially more material in a different area than is currently being split and discharged in two places. And the current area would have been closer to the shared beach that is deeded to a certain number of properties in that general area. So a letter went back out saying we're going to look to try to maintain status quo. We are still trying to seek assistance from some properties. And as Counselor Cheney mentioned, you know, is there an opportunity to sleeve something, slide a pipe into existing, and align it that way as a way of extending the life without having to go in and dig and trench and those types of things? Again, I believe the age of some of these culverts and some of these pipes is the issue, and potentially we could try and line it, but that if the pipe collapsed, you know, we're collapsing on top of a liner that may not support it. So Wes, do you have any additional details that you could provide for us tonight?
At this point, we haven't. We do know that there are sections that basically have to be replaced, but they're in the right of way. And I can get some more information and pass that out about the actual condition, the portion that goes from the right of way to the lake. We know part of it, we were able to camera, and it's in very bad shape, but I'll get you some more details.
Okay, so we are working with the neighbors, as Counselor Cheney mentioned. We do, you know, try to communicate these things and get neighborhood support before we move forward. And in this particular case, we heard that there were some concerns. So we will, again, do additional research to see if anything is salvageable there on the first discharge that we talked about, Counselor Cheney, and I'll update you and the council when we get that information.
If I might, I, for the sake of those who maybe have not received the letter or whatever, in our conversation, there was concern that the city was thinking of draining a swampy area up on Old North Main Street, I think across the road. And that plan is no longer part of the city's plan, as I understand it.
Yeah, actually, we were, there was one catch basin up on Old North Main that I think there was confusion, that people were thinking we were going to connect into. And that was, that was never the case. It was basically going to be that several catch basins were going to be connected to the one system that drained closer to the beach, and therefore more materials would be out on that discharge pipe. So we'll get the updated information. I know there's also a concern about the condition of the pipe coming out near the beach and aesthetically, and where it comes out and how it's looking, so we'll make sure that we address that as well.
Thank you, and thank Wes.
Thank you, Counselor Cheney. Counselor Felt.
Yes, actually, just this afternoon, a constituent reached out to me, said they noticed patching going on on the Weers Boulevard, and had asked whether it was, they were done, or if they were going to continue doing some more areas closer to Laconia.
Closer to Laconia and Weers Boulevard, or other areas?
Yeah, closer towards the Marri Gate End.
Wes, if you're still there and available to unmute, or Glenn, if you can unmute him?
Counselor Member Felt, we've basically completed the bad ones that we wanted to get done before Motorcycle Week. We've got some others that we need to touch, but is rapidly getting towards tourist season, and we're going to be unable to work on it. So the objective was to get the major ones done on Weers Boulevard before this weekend. So we anticipate going back, but probably not till after Labor Day.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Felt. Any other council comments at this point? Counselor Cheney, for a second time?
Yes, please. I wonder if I could ask either the mayor or the manager to discuss with the school department before we get done with the budget, whether the school is anticipating teaching Kirk Gores Theory, or using the 1619 Project book as an educational tool. I'd like to know about that, and I suspect others might, as we go forward here. So if I could ask one of you to find out for us. Thank you.
Well, I certainly have no problem asking. I would think it would be appropriate, the City Manager, to maintain the chain of command in the city, that that might be a question that would be appropriate for him.
Sure, I'm happy to reach out to the superintendent and get a response for that question, Counselor. Thank you.
Any other comments from councils? Seeing none, I'd like to move along to committee reports. Any committee reports this evening, councilors? Are there any liaison reports? Seeing no counselor comments, or, excuse me, seeing no committee reports or liaison reports, we'd move along to item number 19 on the agenda, which is citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. Mr. Smith, I'll wait on your cue. To citizens who are tuned in, this would be the appropriate time to comment on items that are on this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nobody has raised a hand at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Moving on to item number 20, would be the City Manager's report. I'd like to hand that over to Scott Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two updates are included in your agenda packet for this second meeting of the month. The first one is the road projects update. So the big area we're working on right now is sewer work going on in Mechanic Street to be followed up, as we're currently out to bid right now on the large Elm Street project for sewer replacement as well, which hopefully will be beginning, if not sometime in June, then probably no later than the first week in July. And that project encompasses not only the sewer work, but it'll be sidewalks, it'll be drainage, and a street paving of not only Elm Street, but a couple of other side streets as well. As you recall, with the council's support, we've submitted a bid, sorry, a grant request through the Transportation Alternatives Program through the state to do a comprehensive sidewalk on one side and multiple-use pathway on the other side of Elm Street, and really connect it all the way from Lakeport down to Elm Street School, not only for kids going to school, but for a very highly populated neighborhood to have good alternative options for transportation. And I believe the sidewalk even will extend past the Elm Street School and down to Hickory Stick Lane, is my understanding. So we'll have news for you on that potential grant. That was, as I shared with you, the highest rated grant out of our Regional Planning Commission. So the Regional Planning Commission then submits those, in essence, to the state level, and all the other regional planning commissions have their projects in the mix, and they'll be scored against other projects, something like that. So we will keep you posted on that, but that is obviously, you know, the big paid-in project and the big road construction project that'll be coming on this summer. On your economic development report, you can see the unemployment rates at the top of page one of the report, page 37. Again, we are, you know, basically back almost to levels that we were at in March of 2020 before the pandemic hit. And I think the most recent data, where this is a little delayed, and the reporting from the state came out toward the end of last week, that showed the unemployment numbers even getting stronger. So positive news, the challenging point is you look at help-wanted ads online or in local newspapers, and I don't think I've seen the volume of ads that I see today for businesses that are looking for help. And it runs the gamut of all types of businesses. It's not just seasonal in the service agency, it's manufacturing, it's clerical, it's, you know, year-round positions with benefits. But it's a very challenging time to be hiring in this environment. We're all competing for the same talent in a relatively small pool. Second page of the economic development report shows you the inflation number for the month of April. Actually, it took a jump up as the reopening gained a little bit of steam. We saw a little price pressure put on some of the commodities, as Dean alluded to, with some of the home building that's been building and spiking, along with energy, and also some pressures, just with the chain supply of products coming in. Some of that is still being impacted by COVID. Some of that was impacted by the barge and the tanker blockage in the Suez Canal a month or so back. They're really kind of backed up a lot of the shipping ports and offloading the vehicles and stuff. But I think that's the highest number that I've seen the inflation run for a month, for many, many years. So we're a third of the way through the year. The number a third of the way through the year is around 2.5%. So nothing crazy as far as where we are right now on an annualized basis. I also wanted to provide a brief update on Motorcycle Week and applications that the city has received in conjunction with the guidance provided by the council two weeks ago towards trying to open up the event a little more and allow the beer tents and outdoor entertainment stages and more capacity on individual properties. One item I'll kick it off with, that I'm sure will be of particular interest that we were really challenged, is in lining up a vendor for the porta-potties for this event. I don't know if it's through COVID, there's been bigger demand, there's been consolidation in the industry. We reached out to go out to bid, and we bid it the first time, and the price came in, in the lowest bidder, of which we only received two bids, came in in the low $20,000 range for porta-potties for the week, when in the past, we had spent somewhere in the area of $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 for the exact same number of units for the exact same number of days. We rejected those bids, we made specific outreach to probably another half a dozen companies and said, "Did you see this? Did you miss this?" Went out to bid a second time, got the same two respondents. The low bidder had knocked a little bit off of their original bid. And when we went to award it, they let us know that they couldn't fulfill, they could no longer fulfill the request. And basically, we were left with one bidder on this. So I don't know what's driving it, but certainly a fourfold increase in porta-potties, if you can even get them for this year. So I know you're all on the edge of the seats when you're hearing that as well. So beyond there, in general, for Motorcycle Week, we did have the deadline as of this past Friday for any applications of folks either requesting to modify their original submittal, which had been approved, and by modify, I mean to allow for additional density, or add a beer tent request, or an entertainment stage request that we weren't accepting in the first place, and/or get in new applications that we haven't received yet. In working with our staff, and Dean Trefethan and his staff in particular, we really tried to streamline this process for applicants who had already had site plans approved in prior years, so 2019 early. In this case, mostly just for vendor sites that the cities had no issues with, so we didn't have any notes on file saying, hey, they were a challenge or a problem, or they weren't complying, and we had to go back there multiple times. And basically, if their requests looked to be in line with what was in prior years. Under those scenarios, basically, Dean is looking to provide administrative approval rather quickly, and not requiring those folks to come in and attend a meeting and speak and that type of stuff. So that's our approach for that particular block of applicants. We did receive what I'll refer to as for either modified or new applications for beer tents or expanded alcohol areas or stages out to our entertainment. And in reviewing those with staff, they are having a formal meeting, because those are a little more complex with, you know, folks from Public Works and fire and police, as well as planning, and that's being held Friday. But in reviewing those with Dean and some of his staff this morning, there's nothing there that doesn't look workable on the city's end. And with some reasonable approaches, we would expect approval of those four applications. One of them, at first blush, seemed very aggressive with the number of vendor sites that they were requesting in and around a beer tent and entertainment and burnout pits and that type of stuff. While the site could handle that number of vendors potentially, just in this environment, it looked very clustered and very overwhelming. When we peeled it back and looked at the number of sites they were looking for, we currently don't even have that many vendors citywide that come to Motorcycle Week right now. So scaling that number back and discussing with the applicant about just giving a little bit of spacing and not doing anything to deter them from having a successful event with a beer tent and the other things they're approaching, we think is very workable. Certainly, you know, I put the asterix there that we're going to be requiring these folks to do what we talked about and have that, probably that snow fencing part way up and the tent flaps to come down, so we try to circulate some air, but also maintain the integrity of the tent for, in terms of them being able to card folks going in the building and being able to control alcohol to a particular site that was approved by the Liquor Commission, those types of things. But that's nothing that we didn't discuss a couple of weeks ago. Also, you know, we'll be looking to have a couple of sanitizing stations available within, in the depends, you know, and the number to be determined, depending on the size of the tent that people are putting up. So again, looking at, you know, working with staff, having a conversation, reviewing. everything that was submitted, we feel that these, with some very reasonable approaches and responses, should all get a positive response from the city and move forward through the meeting at the end of the week. So wanted to share that with you and happy to take questions on that or anything else anybody may have tonight.
Scott, your use of the word depends got me thinking. Are we able to secure the porta potties at this time, even though we've had one response?
My understanding is we went back to that vendor and were to bid, and at this moment they are, they said they have committed. So I'm hopeful. Otherwise, it might be a, sometimes you see the signs in state parks that say carry in, carry out. Maybe we'll have a carry in, carry out Motorcycle Week, but I'm not sure how beer tents work in conjunction with a carry in, carry out to the others.
That's what got me thinking. I think maybe we should load up on depends. And you know, no one has to worry about the porta potties, but might be a nice revenue source for the city. So anyway, please keep us posted on that.
I'd be happy to.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Moving right along to item number twenty-one, which is new business. This is the 2021 first half sewer warrant per chapter 190-50c. Collection of flat rate sewer accounts are collected by the tax collector. The fiscal impact here, collection of $215,212.42. This report is submitted by Lindsey Allen, a tax collector, with a recommendation to approve and sign the 2021 first half sewer warrant. Looking for a motion right now, move to approve the 2021 first half sewer warrant. So made by Councilor Susie, seconded by Councilor Felch. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Yes.
Councilor Susie? You're on mute.
Yes, I'm mute.
Councilor Cheney?
Councilor Littman?
Yes.
Councilor May?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Oh, did she?
Councilor Felch?
Yes.
Had six votes in the affirmative and that motion passes. Moving right along to number twenty-one B on our agenda, which is a request to authorize the city manager to enter into an intermunicipal agreement to joint, for joint representation with cable television franchise negotiations with Atlantic Broadband LLC. Scott, would you like to give us just perhaps a brief overview before we enter into the motions?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So our franchise agreement with Atlantic Broadband is up for renewal. Current agreement was a ten-year agreement. We found it very beneficial to partner with neighboring communities who are also on the same timeframe and also with Atlantic Broadband to work with one attorney representing, I think it's nine communities this time, as we all have similar interests and 99.9% of our agreements are going to be the same. So what we're doing here tonight is, if you approve it, is to authorize me to sign the intermunicipal agreement, which was created by our lead attorney on this particular matter, Kate Miller from Donahue-Tucker-Chiandella. It's been approved and reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, which has to review all intermunicipal agreements. The second thing is there's a housekeeping form disclaimer that if we work with this law firm, they in the future may be representing other interests, and this is the sole thing that they're representing us on this time. And the third is actually kind of kicks off the formal process and we send a letter that you see attached to Atlantic Broadband saying, yes, we are formally kicking this off and we will start to schedule items along the way, which would include a public hearing, a public comment period that would allow residents to come in and speak to the terms of any proposed agreement or speak to the customer service that they've received or heard about with Atlantic Broadband and speak to those types of items. I do caution people, and I probably have said it to you all before, this is, this agreement solely deals with cable television, even though cable providers, telecommunications providers offer other services like internet or telephone or other things. Our franchise agreement is solely focused on cable television. And the two things everybody likes to ask questions about or put their input in are two things that under federal law, we have no control over. Number one is the type of programming that gets offered and how they bundle it. And number two is the pricing of the bundles or the packages that are offered. So this is really focused on, is Atlantic Broadband or really any cable provider providing good customer service? Are they responsive if there's outages? Are they building it out to new developments per the letter of the agreement, which is dealing with items like density of houses, how many houses there have to be before they extend the lines, how many feet or yards off of the current traveled public way? Do they have to extend it without charging customers and those types of things? So those are the three motions before you tonight. But for the most part, this is pretty dry stuff and under federal law, pretty much the stack is decked against communities and our negotiating powers in these matters.
Shocking. Any questions of the city manager before we move this to motions? Councilor Littman?
Thank you, Mayor, manager. With respect to the services that sort of wrap around this that are provided to the city, are those, in fact, part of what's going to be in the municipal agreement, is that for us to work out individually at the end? You know, I think like the warning system and the cable access television station and that kind of stuff, from remembering correctly, some of the things that were points to work out. And then since we also now have two providers in the community, there was some adjustments made there with respect to what each one had to do. Can you speak to that part?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. That's a great question. So I will say that Laconia is very unique in the fact that we actually have two cable providers in the community, and that is not the norm in the state. I would say there maybe are less than 20 communities statewide that have multiple cable franchisees in the community. And the basic reason for that is they have to, companies basically have to come in and number one, get a franchise agreement, which we can't unreasonably withhold. But at the same time, we have to make the franchise agreements substantially equal. And that's a little bit difficult when you've got an agreement that might be 10 or 20 years old that you've renewed versus a new company coming in. But basically, you can't put one company at a competitive advantage or disadvantage over another. So number one, in the situation where Comcast is our newest entry into the market, they need to come in and live to the same terms that we negotiated with them, which are basically the same substantial terms that were in the agreement with Atlantic Broadband. So they can't come in and just cherry pick the easiest to get to houses or the most densely populated neighborhoods or anything like that. They've got to build out the city in a reasonable amount of time to the same extent that their contract does. So we do have little items within there that I think you're referring to, whether it's the PEG channels, the public and education governmental channels. So again, those would be consistent. So we're a little bit off cycle where I think the Comcast agreement probably was two years ago. We know that basically whatever we're going to negotiate with Atlantic Broadband pretty much has to mirror what we're done with Comcast. Otherwise Comcast would come back and said, you made them provide less or you gave them more, therefore we need to now open up our contract. So that's kind of the balancing act of why I say there's not a whole lot of wiggle room in these things. So we will continue to have the PEG channels. We do receive a small amount of what's referred to as a technology grant on an annual basis that we can use for things like upgrading communications, cameras and microphones in council chambers for doing meetings and those types of things. We also have elected to have a franchise fee that is a fee that Atlantic Broadband and now Comcast both collect and provide to the city as part of cable packages that residents subscribe to. And so those types of things can be slight nuances within the framework, but for the most part, I would expect that this contract is going to closely mirror the existing one. And in that vein, also closely resemble what we just did with Comcast two years ago because it has to if we made significant changes. Not to say we won't look at it. If there was a great opportunity and we could do something that really benefited the city, I'm just not aware of those types of options that are out there for us right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Littman. Councilor Cheney?
I wonder if we could get a map of what area they cover presently and some sort of identification of where they will be building out during the coming calendar or two calendar years.
Are you talking about Comcast?
Yes. Yes. How about Atlantic?
So Atlantic Broadband is our current carrier and they have built out everywhere in the city that meets the terms and the requirements of our franchise agreement. So if a new neighborhood went up off of Parade Road to get three houses and it was a mile run to get to the first of the three houses, and I'm kind of just making up a scenario, that probably doesn't meet the density and the distance to require Atlantic Broadband to run all that infrastructure and wire out there to pick up three new houses. But at the same token, if a new subdivision went off Parade Road and it started 100 yards off of Parade Road and there were 30 houses there, they would certainly be required to go in and run the infrastructure to make the service available, whether customers signed up for it or not. And that would be the same, that would be the same for Comcast. So I can tell you right now that other than new construction or a new development coming online, Atlantic Broadband is fully built out and meets the terms of the agreement because they've been with us for years and years. Comcast started last fall and is building out basically from the south end of the city because their run came up Route 106 from Concord into a hub or ahead of some sort and just over the line in Belmont, I believe. And they've started building out in the South Main Street area and all around the hospital area. And they've come in through the downtown where they put some conduits under the ground before we did the paving last spring. And they've been building out most recently in Pleasant Street and Gale Ave area. And I've seen them on Union Ave coming in as far as Lakeport, I think. What we've run into a little bit with Comcast is there's a significant number of new poles that they need to put in, the taller poles and replace the other ones. And with our existing workload with other utilities and whatever, there's a lot of poles they're requesting and where we're really, I don't want to say struggling, but we've just tried to schedule a recent meeting with them so that we know what their needs are so we can stay ahead with approval of these new pole licenses and get them in. But it's Comcast now who's waiting on another utility company who owns the poles to actually come in and set the poles. So that's slowing them down. So we're trying to get a sense of their map, if you will, of how they're going to build out the city so that A, we can coordinate with them and stay ahead of them, but maybe B, they can shift a little bit and go and work in some areas that they don't have to replace poles on so that they can give us a little bit of a break with our workload as well. But generally, generally speaking, the build out from Comcast is going to happen from south, Belmont coming in and then Union Ave and Route 106, then kind of make its way north from there.
Is there a timeframe?
I believe last time I spoke with my contact there, that their intention was to have the build out completed by the end of this calendar year. And I also, it's my understanding that as they build out certain neighborhoods, they're doing door knockers or door hangers or direct mailings to those neighborhoods that they're ready to start turning into customers. So they're not going to do it citywide if the ability to connect isn't there on the north end right now. They're not going to do targeted mailings and outreach there, but they have been doing some of that in the south end to let people know that it's available.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager in regards to this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we've got a series of three motions here. We're looking for a motion to move to authorize the city manager to enter into an intermunicipal agreement for joint representation with cable television franchise renewal negotiations with Atlantic Broadband LLC. So made by Councilor Felch, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing, did you raise your hand, Councilor Susie? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Yes.
Councilor Susie?
Yes.
Councilor Littman?
Yes.
Councilor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Yes.
Had six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. The second motion is looking for a motion to move to authorize the city manager to sign the representation agreement with Donahue-Tucker and Chiandella PLLC. So made by Councilor Felch and seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Littman?
Yes.
Councilor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Councilor Felch? Councilor Felch, I think you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. And finally, be looking for a motion and a move to authorize the city manager to sign the attached letter to Atlantic Broadband, formally opening the ascertainment and review process and notifying Atlantic Broadband of the city, initiating the process of ascertaining the cable-related needs and interests of the city and auditing the past performance of ABB under the existing franchise agreement. So made by Councilor Felch and seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Yes.
Councilor Susie?
Yes.
Councilor Littman?
Yes.
Councilor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Councilor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number twenty-one C, which is a request to hold Juggernaut 5K on July 3, 2021 and to approve a temporary traffic order 2020-06. Local business Juggernaut Fitness located at 24 Lexington Ave in Laconia has requested approval of a 5K race to be held on city streets on July 3, 2021, as shown on the map, which has been included with the agenda item. Organizers of the race anticipate between 150 to 200 participants. Proceeds will be donated to the children's auction. There will be no closure of streets, but Laconia Police Department will provide personnel to ensure the safety of all involved in the event. Be looking for a motion right now, a move to approve the request to hold the Juggernaut 5K on July 3, 2021 and to approve temporary traffic order 2021-06. So made by Councilor Susie, seconded by Councilor Felch. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Cheney?
Yes.
Councilor Susie?
Yes.
Councilor Littman?
Yes.
Councilor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Councilor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving along to item number twenty-one D, this is the first reading of resolution 2021-08 relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2021 and terminating June 30, 2022. The proposed fiscal year 22 budget was presented to the city council on April 26, 2021, per section 5:04 of the city charter. A public hearing must be held prior to the adoption of the budget by the council to allow for public input and discussion. This is the first reading of the budget and resolution. Scheduling of the budget public hearing with the second reading will follow. The proposed budget includes estimated revenues and expenditures and the estimated tax rate for the general fund. The city manager recommends that the city council accept this budget, and the report was prepared by Glenn Smith, our finance director. So be looking for three motions. So be looking for three motions here. One, first one would be a move to waive the reading of this resolution and to read by title only, so made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion?
Point of water, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor. I hear you. I don't see you. You've got me confused. Yes, Counselor Littman, though.
Yeah, I I guess the, we had talked about trying to streamline this in terms of we're gonna repeat the same thing seven times in terms of, you know, waiting. Um, is there a way we cannot um simplify this? I don't want to extend the meeting simplifying it, but it just seems like we're gonna do the same motion six times. We have a global motion that we're going to waive the reading on all the um pieces and that we're going to schedule a public hearing on the same day at the same time. Just trying to save, save us the burden of this.
The the burden of listening to my voice?
No, that's that's the best part. That's the best part, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Littman. Uh, I'm I'm all for that. I just want to make sure that we're compliant and and we don't do it now and find out we have to do it again in a different way in the future. I'd look to you, city manager.
So we actually did reduce this from, I think, what was nine resolutions passed, and we've got it five. So the general fund was always one. We blended all the special revenue funds into one. We blended um the enterprise funds into one, so we've got it down to five this year, and I think Glenn's goal is to slowly lean us down um further. I do say that um the the budget and how it gets moved and how you hold the public hearings and and document them is probably one of the most important things we do. So um I love hearing Mayor Hosmer's voice just to, just, you know, to butter him up a little bit there a little bit. Um, and I and I get it that this year with everything being roll call, Vogue drags it out even a little bit more, but um we did, we did basically cut it in half this year. Um, and we're gonna work with legal counsel to um see if we can streamline a little more. But for tonight, I'm gonna ask your indulgence and um go through it as is presented.
Thank you for doing what you did.
Streamlining government, really an admirable quality. Thank you, Scott and and Mr. Smith. So, all right, so bear with me here. Um, where are we? I've already lost track when I was interrupted.
We're moving to waive.
We're moving to waive. Okay, so we have a first, Counselor Cheney, and a second, Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Uh, second motion is uh looking to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-08 relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. And finally, I'd be looking for a motion to move to schedule a public hearing on June 14th, 2021 during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by, is that your hand or a tail wagging, Counselor Felch? So made by Counselor Felch and seconded by Counselor Susie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
The six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Counselor Felch, I think your cat wants to be your proxy.
Well, the cat said yes, too.
Moving I onto item number 21E, which is the first reading of Resolution 2021-09 relative to making itemized appropriations for anticipated grants for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating, terminating June 30th, 2022. The proposed fiscal year 2022 budget was presented on April, to the city council on April 26, 2021. Per Section 5:04 of the City Charter, a public hearing must be held prior to the adoption of the budget by the council to allow for public input and discussion. This is the first reading of the anticipated grants budget resolution. Scheduling of the budget public hearing with a second reading will follow. The resolution contains proposed expenditures and related grant revenues. Local matches, when required, are included in the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. This report was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director, and the city manager recommends the city council approve this resolution as presented. Be looking for a motion to move to waive the reading of this resolution and to read by title only, so made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor uh Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Second motion would be to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-09 relative to making itemized appropriations for anticipated grants for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch? Counselor Felch is muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. And finally, I'd be looking for a motion to schedule a public hearing on June 14th, 2021 during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Moving on to item number 21F, the first reading of Resolution 2021-10 on our enterprise funds. Um, it's relative to making itemized appropriations for city enterprise funds, sanitary sewer fund, and waterworks fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. The proposed sewer fund and waterworks fund budgets include estimated revenues and expenses for fiscal year 2022. Uh, the report was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director, and is recommended by the city manager to be approved as presented. I'd be looking for three motions. The first motion is to move a rating, reading of this resolution and read by title only, so made by Counselor Cheney. Seconded by Counselor Haynes. I'd ask the clerk to please, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. I'd be looking for a motion to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-10 relative to making itemized appropriations for city enterprise funds, sanitary sewer fund, and waterworks fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. And finally, on this agenda item, I'm looking for a motion to move to schedule a public hearing June 14th, 2021 during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Moving on to item number 21G, uh, which is the first reading of Resolution 2021-11 relative to making itemized appropriations for the Internal Services Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. Uh, the proposed Internal Service Fund budget includes estimated revenues, expenses, and expenses for fiscal year 2022. The report was submitted by our finance director, Glenn Smith, and the city manager recommends the city council approve this resolution as presented. Bless you, Counselor Susie. Looking for a motion to move the, move to waive reading of this resolution and to read by title only, so made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Three, six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. I'd be looking for a second motion to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-11 relative to making itemized appropriations for the Internal Services Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. And finally, I'd be looking for a a motion to move to schedule a public hearing on June 14th, 2021 during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Moving right along now to number 21H on our agenda. This is the first reading of Resolution 2021-12 relative to making itemized appropriations for the following city special revenue funds. Motorcycle Week Fund and Ambulance EMS Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. The proposed Motorcycle Week Special Revenue Fund budget and Ambulance EMS Special Revenue Fund budget include estimated revenues and expenses for fiscal year 2022. Uh, this report was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director, and it's recommended by our city manager, Scott Myers, that it be approved as presented. Looking for three motions here. The first, I moved away the reading of this resolution and to read by title only, so made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Our second motion is a, is to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-12 relative to making itemized appropriations for the following city special revenue funds. Motorcycle Week Fund and Ambulance EMS Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. And finally, on this agenda item, I'd be looking for a motion to move to schedule a public hearing on this matter for June 14th, 2021 during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor? I didn't hear you, Counselor.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative and that motion passes. Moving on to item 21I. My gosh, we're almost finished. That went by fast. This is the first reading of Resolution 2021-13 relative to making itemized appropriations for the city's free tax increment finance district. Downtown Tiff, Lakeport Tiff, and Weers Tiff for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, terminating June 30th, 2022. The proposed tax increment finance district budgets include estimated revenues for fiscal year 22. Report, this report was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director, and the city manager, Scott Myers, recommends the city council approve this resolution as presented. This is a series of three motions. Again, I'd be looking for a motion to waive the reading of this resolution to read by title only, so made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? And seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. We're looking for a second motion to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-13 relative to making itemized appropriations for the city's three tax increment finance districts. Downtown Tiff, Lakeport Tiff, and Weers Tiff for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and terminating June 30th, 2022. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. And finally, on this agenda item, we're looking for a motion to move to schedule a public hearing on June 14th, 2021 during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. Mr. Myers? We set them up and we knock them down one by one. Reminds me of the AFC East. What the Patriots are gonna do this year. Right?
Looks kind of fishy.
Smells kind of fishy. Even one more up. All right, let's move on to item number 22. This is the second reading of ordinance is 2021-235-131719 to amend the City Code, Chapter 235 zoning, making amendments related to various aspects of wetland and wetland buffer regulations. Conservation Committee has been reviewing the sections of the zoning ordinance related to wetlands and associated buffers. Over the past several months, many amendments to Sections 13, 17, and 19 have been proposed. In Section 13, some definition definitions were added In Section 13, some definitions were added or clarified to reflect regulations later outlined in the ordinance. In Sections 17 and 19, some instances, the ordinance has been strengthened. In some cases, made less stringent. In some cases, simply clarified. And in some cases, amended to agree with state regulations. The Conservation Commission voted their approval of the changes and referred the amendments to the Planning Board, which after discussion and consideration, held a public hearing. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend the changes for approval by the city council. There is no fiscal impact to the city. This report was submitted by Dean Trefeffin, Planning and Code Enforcement Director. As indicated, the Planning Board recommends these amendments. So this is a series of three motions. The first one is being a move to waive reading of these ordinances in their entirety and to read by titles only. So made by Councillor Cheney, seconded by Councillor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councillor Cheney?
Yes.
Councillor Susie?
Yes.
Councillor Littman?
Yes.
Councillor Hamel?
Yes.
Councillor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Next, we're looking for a motion to move a second reading of ordinances 2021-235-1317 and 19, amending the adopted versions. So made by Councillor Cheney, seconded by Councillor Haynes. Is there further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councillor Cheney?
Yes.
Councillor Susie?
Yes.
Councillor Littman?
Yes.
Councillor Haynes?
Yes.
Councillor Hamel?
Yes.
Councillor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion also passes. Third and finally, I'd be looking for a motion to approve ordinances 2021-235-1317 and 19, amending the adopted versions. So made by Councillor Cheney, seconded by Councillor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.